Okay, I have about seven o'clock. I would like to call the Board of Selecting Meeting for Tuesday evening, July 14th, 2020 to order. And I would like to read the following. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Could I please ask that if anyone is recording the meeting, if you could use the raise hand function to indicate so? Okay, seeing none, we will approve, we will move to the first order of business, which is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes for two separate meetings that each took place on June 18th.
I've reviewed and I submitted comments, and I know that those have been distributed. So at this point, I would move to approve the minutes dated June 18th, 2020, meeting at 5:30 PM. And I also move to approve the minutes dated June 18th, 2020, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, I'm going to second both of those. I was not in attendance at the meeting on June 18th at 7:00, but I will vote to approve those minutes so that they can be approved. Is there any, I beg your pardon, I just, I'm seeing a hand that is raised, and I don't know if it's relative to recording, so I would just like to recognize the person who's on the line from the Sidronis. I apologize if I've mispronounced the name.
No, you said it right. Dave Sidroni, WATD News, up in the signs to this meeting tonight, I am recording.
Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you.
So, is there any further discussion relative to the minutes of the meeting? Okay, all those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
I'm going to stay in Mary's, that was still before my time.
And I will vote aye.
So that's a vote on both minutes.
On both minutes, that's correct. The motion was for both. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the review and approval of interdepartmental transfers. We did the majority of these a few weeks ago, but as is often the case, sometimes as the books close, we find we have to do a few others. Michelle, will you be walking us through these?
Sure. So before you, there are basically two sets of interdepartmental transfers tonight. One is an additional transfer to the legal services for additional bills that we received recently. Many of those were related to COVID-19, as well as to the water acquisition. So that's for $35,000, and we would be covering that from engineering salaries. The other is a set of five interdepartmental transfers for relatively small amounts. These are for some of the town hall departments because we try to be as precise as we can when we're planning for the future fiscal year in terms of payroll. And the last day of FY '20 fell on a Tuesday, which are longer hours for us, so instead of seven hours, it was nine hours, and so we're a little bit short for five departments there. And we are covering that from land use and development salaries because we had a surplus there.
Okay. Joe or Bill, any questions for Michelle about any of these transfers?
I don't have any questions. I reviewed these with Tom last week, and I'm satisfied.
Thank you. Bill?
No questions for me, Mary, thank you.
Okay, I have also reviewed these with Tom, and I would just note that with respect to the legal services fees, any of those fees that are associated with the acquisition of the Weir River Water System will be reimbursed to the town after the closing, so I know a portion of those fees related to that. Okay, and I think we need to vote each of these separately, so I would, I would accept motions for any and all of these transfers.
I would make a motion to recommend an interdepartmental transfer to legal services from engineering salaries for $35,000.
Second.
Okay, and I actually neglected to ask if there were questions or comments from the public on these, so I'll do that right now before the board votes. Any questions or comments about this transfer? Okay, seeing none by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you.
I'll move to recommend an interdepartmental, an interdepartmental transfer to conservation salaries from land use salaries for $236.
Second.
Any further discussion or any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you.
I'd make a, I'd make a recommendation for an interdepartmental, interdepartmental transfer to planning salaries from land use salaries for $220.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion, questions or comments from the public?
Hi, my name is Michael Satel, and I'm at 34 Rockwood Road, and I actually do have a question, and I'm not sure if this is the right place to interject, but it seems like it.
Okay.
There is a property that I have been reaching out to the town a number of times, and I don't know who to talk to at 32 Rockwood Road that is adjacent to mine. And I don't know if it's land use because it's owned by the town because the prior owner went bankrupt, or if it's assessor, or if it's the selectman, so.
Mr. Satel, first of all, thank you very much for being here at the meeting. If I may ask, we have a section on our agenda called Public Comment.
Yes. I saw that section, but since it's talking about budget for the assessors and the land use, I didn't.
Of course. What I can tell you, the short answer, and I was forwarded a copy of correspondence that I believe you had with the previous board member, and we have asked our land use department to just look into this matter and to respond to it. And the notice that I received last week from Ms. Wentworth was that she wanted to just do a little bit more research about the property and about the issue. And so my expectation is that we may hear back from her this week.
Okay.
And so what, what I'd like to commit, and our Assistant Town Administrator, Michelle Montegor is on the line, that the Selectman's Office will just follow up with you next week, either to say, you know, the status is we're still looking at this, or to begin engaging in discussion. But we did, we did receive the correspondence, and we have, we have put it into action.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll go back on mute.
Okay. Any other discussion on this reserve fund transfer? Seeing none, all those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Okay, how about the next one, please?
So I, am I correct, the next one is the veteran, veteran salaries?
I think so.
Yes. Yeah, so I move to recommend an interdepartmental transfer to veteran salaries from land use salaries for $157.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. This is a biggie. Next one.
I would move to recommend an interdepartmental transfer to recreation salaries from land use salaries for $25.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. We watch every penny of taxpayer dollars. No dollar is too small. And how about the last one?
I move to recommend an interdepartmental transfer to historical salaries from land use salaries for $109.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is board and committee reappointments. And just, you know, before we take some votes, I would just mention for benefit of the public that Hingham is really just so fortunate that we have so many people in our community who are willing to contribute their time and their talent and their expertise to serving on a variety of volunteer boards and committees. I think overall, we have a couple of hundred people that volunteer for our town, and every year, it's just so gratifying to see people willing to step up. For those who maybe have seen through the Hingham Journal, or the Hingham Anchor, or notes from Town Hall, we're also right now in the process of the Talent Bank process, where we're asking people who are interested in serving to let us know what their interests are. We are scheduling interviews, which is our common practice, with the goal being really to match people's interests with available positions. Typically, what precedes that is that we have a number of people who serve on boards and committees, and it's kind of the, the practice in Hingham that, that people, once appointed, have the opportunity to serve for, for two terms. Through, through the great work of Sharon Perfetti and the Selectman's Office, we have reached out to all the committee boards and chairs and all of the volunteers to see if people are interested in being reappointed to a term. Again, this will just help the board understand what openings we have. Tonight, we're going to consider a number of reappointments, but we also still probably have, I would guess, between 30 and 50 volunteer positions to fill, both expired terms on boards or commissions, as well as a couple new committees that were created by Town Meeting. So what, what I'm going to do, based on our vote list, is I'm just going to read the name of the committee, and Bill and Joe, if, I think you have materials, if you'd like to offer names for reappointment, we will, we will go ahead and do that. And I will start with the Zoning Board of Appeals. These are one-year terms.
So I will make a motion for reappointments, but before I do, I just note that one person we are not reappointing is Joe Freeman, who recently passed. And he was an active member, both as a full-time, as well as a, an associate member, and he is missed. So with that, I would move to reappoint Joseph, I'm not sure I'm going to pronounce it correctly, Rukio, Andy Tuchet, David Ulrich, Mario Romania, and Michael Mercuria. And those are for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Joe, I would just echo, seeing Joe's name on this, I've had the privilege, I had the privilege of appointing him and sitting in so many meetings where he was a voice of clarity, of sound judgment, and just of cordiality. And his losses felt particularly on a night like tonight when we're making these appointments, and are just so grateful for the service that he gave to the town for so many years. The next committee is the Bearcove Park Committee. We have a couple appointments, reappointments, but I would also mention to the public that we have a few vacant positions if anyone is interested. Would someone like to make a motion for Bearcove Park?
I'd make a motion to reappoint Claudia Eaton and Ricard Johnson to the Bearcove Park Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Next is the Beautification Committee. I believe there's one reappointment.
Yes, I move to reappoint Carolyn Aliski to the Beautification Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. I would just mention to the public, we have one opening on the Beautification Committee in addition to the reappointment that was made for tonight. Cable Advisory TV Committee?
I'd make a motion to reappoint John Rice to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Okay, next is the Community Preservation Committee.
I move to reappoint William Harrington to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Okay, next is the Conservation Committee, Conservation Commission. We have three individuals seeking reappointment.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Thomas Robey, Robert Mosher, and Henry Heidel to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion or public comment? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Council on Aging?
I move to reappoint Lucinda King-Frode, Deborah Sullivan, and Linda Powers to the Council on Aging Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. I would mention to the public there that there are two vacancies right now on the Council on Aging for anyone who's interested in joining this group. Next is the Country Club Management Committee.
I'd make a motion to reappoint William Friend and Sue Sullivan to the Country Club Management Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. And again, I would just mention to the public that there is an opening right now, an additional one on the Country Club Management Committee. Next committee we're taking up tonight is G.A.R. Hall.
Okay, I move to reappoint Robert Beal Jr. as a G.A.R. Hall trustee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Harvard Development?
I'd make a motion to reappoint Marco Bora to the Harvard Development Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. And the Harvard Development Committee actually currently with, even with this reappointment, has two additional vacancies. They're going to be doing a lot of work over the next few years on the, to fortify the waterfront, the sea, elevate the seawalls, the wharfs, fortify the seawalls. It's a great committee and a great group of people for anyone who's interested.
I'm glad, I just want to add, you know, Bill Reardon is really looking for, for folks to, to join that committee, so if you've got an interest, please make sure you've sent in your Talent Bank application.
Yes. Thank you. Next is the Historical Commission.
I move to reappoint Elizabeth Dings, Stephen Dempsey, and Robert Stansell to the Historical Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Next is the Trustees of the Hingham Public Library.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Tom Carey as a trustee for the Hingham Public Library for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Next, we, the board makes a reappointment as an associate member of the Planning Board.
Bill, I would yield this one to you as the former Planning Board member, if you'd like.
Happy to do it, proud to do it. I'd move that, I'd move to reappoint Ted Matthews as an associate member of the Planning Board for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Next is, we have an appointment for one registrar of voters.
I move to appoint Judith Nims as a registrar for the Town of Hingham for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Next is the Scholarship Fund Committee.
I'd move to reappoint Adam White to the Scholarship Fund Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Next is the Shade Tree Committee.
I move to reappoint Michael Studley and Philip Schut to the Shade Tree Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. And the last vote for tonight is a reappointment to the Water Transition and Evaluation Committee.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Scott Sear to the Water Transition and Evaluation Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you very much. For those who have been reappointed, the Selectman's Office will be sending a letter out confirming your reappointment, as well as notifying the Chair of your committee of their reappointment. As I mentioned at the beginning of the discussion of this agenda item, the board in, along with the moderator, will be conducting Talent Bank interviews to fill many of the other vacant positions. Among the committees that are newly created by Town Meeting are the Public Safety and Senior Center Building Committees, and the Tree Preservation Bylaw Committee. So we will look forward to, to meeting and engaging additional volunteers in the town. For those who are interested in, in learning about those opportunities on the Town website, if, if you put in the search for a Talent Bank application, or look in the, the menu for the Town website, this is an online application. It asks for basic information, and that triggers the process for talking about volunteer So having said that, the next item on our agenda is the COVID-19 update.
All right, so I've got a short update tonight. Right now, Massachusetts remains in Phase 3, Step 1 at this time. As of today, the Department of Public Health is reporting 112,130 probable and confirmed cases in Massachusetts, and that includes 8,830 in Plymouth County. As of last Wednesday, DPH was reporting 281 COVID-19 cases in Hingham. I just wanted to remind some folks about the COVID-19 beach guidance. So now that we're in beach season, passive recreation at beaches is allowed under the following guidelines. Groups of 10 people maximum when seated. You need to maintain a distance of at least 12 feet between different groups. Beach capacity can be limited by the manager to achieve social distancing guidelines. Face coverings are required at beaches and in parking areas when social distancing is not possible in accordance with COVID-19 Executive Order Number 31. Water sports are allowed, but organized ball games like volleyball, spikeball, Kadima, bocce, et cetera, are not allowed at this time. Any food service or concessions must conform to applicable food service and restaurant guidance, and restrooms can be open with social distancing in interior spaces and while waiting in line, and CDC compliant cleaning protocols. So we're asking everyone to please respect these guidelines as they enjoy our beaches, and do your part to keep yourself and fellow beachgoers safe this summer. And I have to mention from Susan Sarnie, please do not forget your sunscreen. The other quick update on the COVID-19 front regards Town Hall. So starting yesterday, we have more staff coverage in Town Hall during our normal business hours in Town Hall, which are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Tuesdays from 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. You can see I am back in the office right now, which is much more comfortable than my dining room, and Fridays from 8:30 AM to 1:00 PM. So while Town Hall remains open to employees only at this time, we are working towards reopening to the public later this summer. So we ask that people please continue to call and email departments to get in touch. Thank you very much.
Joe or Bill, did either of you have any questions for Michelle on the COVID-19 update?
I don't, other than just congratulations for that, getting people into Town Hall. I know that some folks have been eager to get there, and we're also making sure that people are getting appropriate guidance so that they're staying safe. So thank you for, to Michelle and the others who have made that possible.
Thank you.
Bill, anything to add?
Just to echo what Joe said about opening Town Hall, it's great to see it open and appreciate your, your hard work you and Tom put into making that work, Michelle, so thank you.
Yeah, and Michelle?
Yes?
Are we considering issuing our Executive Health Officer a sidearm, just to make sure that she can enforce all the guidelines there?
Be careful, she's on the line, I don't want her to get any abuse.
Don't take me up on that.
And on my screen, the police chief is right next to her, you know, on the gallery, so.
But maybe he'll just accompany Susan to make sure that everyone's following the rules. From what I've seen, people are respecting the rules, and it's really great that there's such a high level of concern and respect for, for everyone in Hingham. So, so thank you, Susan, for arranging the rules, and for, to the police chief for walking behind you to enforce those.
Well said, well said. Does anyone in the public have a question or a comment with respect to the COVID-19 update? Okay, the next item on the agenda, and actually, Mr. Satel, I'm very glad that you brought up your question a little earlier, because I just noticed that the public comment was somehow overlooked on the agenda. And we, we can't talk about things that aren't posted, but I do want to assure you that the board heard your question and your concern, and we will take the necessary follow-up. So again, we, we thank, we thank you and, and one of your associates for, for joining us this evening.
Yes.
Before we go to the Selectman and Town Administrator reports, we do have a possible vote, which is a request from the Hingham Downtown Association, and I see tonight that we're joined by Lynn Barclay, who is the President of the Hingham Downtown Association. Lynn, you've sent us some materials, but perhaps for the benefit of the public and for visibility of what we're trying to do, I'd invite you to just describe what you're looking to do, and then maybe we'll ask, we'll ask Susan and the Chief Olson to just, you know, comment on the preparations for it. Lynn, I think you're muted.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Great.
Clear. Thank you for having me. I just want to provide a backdrop of what the Summer Sidewalk Sale event is. It's been going on for about 30 years now. I spoke to a merchant this week, and she opened her doors in 1992, and it was, it was going on at that time. But way back when, when it was, it was really considered the main event for downtown, it had dunk tanks, and it had a band, and it had kid activities. But over the years, it's become a less of an event due to, I think, of the demographics of our town. A lot of people go away in the summer, they travel, they have summer places to go to. So that said, it is still very successful for our merchants, something they rely on. It generates cash flow during what would be slow summer month. It helps the businesses prepare financially for their holidays, purchases, and for Q4, and their customers look forward to it also, and it draws sales seekers. So what it has evolved into is a much smaller event, where merchants put out tables or racks, and it creates a festive atmosphere downtown and brings people out and about. The scope of the request is that the Hingham Downtown Association is seeking permission for the request and the use of the sidewalks for the merchants to display tables and racks. These will be placed adjacent to the storefronts, and it will not impede or obstruct the pedestrian way. We are not seeking road closures. The dates are Thursday, July 23rd through Saturday, July 25th. July 25. The time is from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the locations are such. 39 Main Street, which is the last store on Main Street, to North Street, South Street from Central to North, North Street from Central to Mill Street, and then 69 Water Street, which is White Magdalena. Also, there was an addendum provided that Susan Sarnie from the Board of Health provided, and it is a COVID guidance for the sidewalk sales that the merchants will adhere to. That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I might ask Susan and Chief Olson, I know you're both on the phone, and Susan, perhaps if you just wanted to maybe, along with any comments that you have, just provide an overview of the guidelines that, that have been established so that this will be conducted in a safe manner. I think that would be helpful.
Okay. The guidance that I provided Lynn was masks should be worn at all times by retailers and guests and provide signage downtown. No food and beverage can be served to the public. No samples or free tasting is allowed. Retailers are in charge of their store space in front of their store, and they should post signs on wearing masks on their doors. When possible, maintain six feet of space inside and outside of stores. Provide hand sanitizer to public and staff. Add arrows in stores for flow of traffic. And no sampling or application of personal goods.
Thank you. Chief Olson, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Good evening. Yeah, the only thing that I did want to add is that I would also like to include no alcohol during any of the serving of food or drink.
And I believe that was on the paperwork that the board received.
Okay.
And we just may want to look at that vote language. It is in the vote language as well.
Okay, good. And I think this has been something that they've, have been very successful in the past, and I am sure that it will go off well. I just urge, the other thing I'd just like to remind is the merchants should make sure that the sidewalks keep moving as well as they have a buildup sort of to control that area. Like I said, it's always been a positive thing down the square, and I expect there would be no issues this year as well.
Certainly. We never have alcoholics served at these events.
Making sure.
Joe or Bill, any questions for, for Lynn or, or for town staff?
I've, I've been to the sale many years. I think it's a great event. I've spoken to merchants this year who are looking forward to it. So I, I think this is good planning and, and a good opportunity. I did have a question about signage. I know that there will be signage in the stores. Will there be any signage outside, either on the sidewalk or on the street?
All of our merchants and storefronts have signage on their windows or their doors.
Okay, so, but so nothing, there's no outside directional signage planned?
I would put sign, I don't think I have the capability of putting signage out there.
No, I mean, I'm thinking arrows or markings for like six feet, things like that.
Um, so taped on the pavement, what are you, what are you looking for? Or just like signage on the tables that they will be having?
So I'm, I'm not looking for something? I'm just wondering if it's been, if it's part of the plan?
It is not.
Okay. And Susan Sarnie, are you looking for any, any markings outside?
I would just like, if Lynn has a capability of doing some A-frames or some signs down there, we don't have to print anything expensive if somebody has a chalkboard, just letting people know to wear masks and social distance. If somebody's not from Hingham, how would they know that this is the requirement of our town? And then they come across and they're at a wonderful store, and it says, wear a mask and social distance. I just kind of want to keep everybody educated that might not be from our town.
Yeah, I guess I would ask that, I know that I've seen general signs around town where it says, please wear masks. Is that something that we could tap into and have those signs be placed around town? It's a key areas, like for instance, at the, the corner of Main Street, oh, I forget what it's called, but it's, it's the corner of Main and, and South Street. I mean, if someone could do that, who's, who's, who's been putting those, posting those signs out? Is it the DPW?
I'm not aware, Lynn, of, of any town department that is posting those signs. Michelle, are you?
If it's the large, like the, the road signs that you're talking about with the, the lights that is between DPW and the Police Department, maybe something better for this would be if any of the merchants have small A-frames or chalkboards or other things that we could just.
I think that's.
Set out for this purpose.
On their tables?
I would just, I would be happy to work with Lynn and make sure we get some of the signage down there. But I think the idea of enhancing and, and making sure that people do wear masks is something that we can easily do. So I'll work with Lynn on that, and we'll get some signage out in the areas.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I have nothing else.
Bill, any questions about this?
A couple of just quick comments. You know, first of all, Lynn, I know I've spoken with you quite a bit over the past year, and just wanted to publicly commend you for your work that you do for the Downtown Association. This event is one of many great events that, yeah, that you lead for the association. I know the last couple of months have been difficult for the merchants. You did a wonderful job on social media and supporting what's going on downtown. I would encourage everybody to please support this event, support our local businesses. And again, Lynn, thanks for all you do. And Sue, Sue, great job working with this event, but also keeping people safe. And you know, Joe mentioned the masks at this event. It's going to be one of our conditions, but I think people should be wearing masks all the time. You know, we need to take care of each other. So that's all I have, but I'm looking forward to this event on Saturday. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Any, any members of the public who have a question or wish to make a comment about this agenda item, Mr. Sato?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that some of the stuff has come by since I did the Zoom Raise My Hand. Some of the stuff that I've seen done really well at other farmers markets or that they're talking about for the Situate Heritage Days is just exactly, you know, chalk on the sidewalk, tape on the sidewalk, denouncing the, the six feet demarcation, things like that. So it's, it's pretty easy. It's pretty low energy, and it's pretty low cost to be able to just remind people that masks are a sign of respect to one another and distances as well.
Thank you. I would just add that I think we all know that for our downtown businesses, as well as all the businesses, the, the shutdown because of COVID has made it really challenging for these businesses. And we've all talked, you know, on this board and Bill on the Planning Board about the fragility of the square and, you know, the real value that all the merchants bring, as well as their generosity in supporting so many community and civic things around town, whether it's a sports group or a civic group, when they're looking to do a fundraiser. These are folks who are donating gift certificates and merchandise and other things. This is an opportunity in a safe, in a safe way to support our merchants, and it has the added benefit that we can do our shopping without having to go into a store, which I think is also, is also helpful. So having that be said, unless there are any other questions or comments, I would accept a motion.
Happy to do it. I'd make a motion to approve the request of Hingham Downtown Association to use the sidewalks located at 39 Main Street to North Street, South Street from Central Street to North, North Street from Central to Mill Street, and 69 Water Street for the annual Summer Sidewalk Sales on July 23 through 25, 2020, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., subject to the following conditions. One, masks should be worn at all times by retailers and guests provide signage downtown. Two, no food or beverages can be served to the public. No samples of free tastings allowed. Three, retailers are in charge of their store space and in front of store. They must post signs on wearing a mask on doors. Four, when possible, maintain six feet of space inside and outside of stores. Five, provide hand sanitizer to public and staff. Six, add arrows in store for flow of traffic. Seven, no sampling or application of personal goods. Eight, no alcohol can be served to the public. And nine, retailers are also responsible for keeping the sidewalks clear for free passage of pedestrians.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Lynn, best of luck, and thank you for all that you do to help maintain the vitality of our downtown.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next on the agenda is actually our last item, our Selectmen and Town Administrator Reports. Michelle, do you have anything additional to report tonight?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Joe, anything to report?
Nothing for this evening.
Bill, anything to report?
Yeah, just very briefly, Mary, you mentioned it, and when we were going over the committee appointments, I got a couple of social media inquiries today about what vacancies we have on which committees. And Mary, you directed people to the Town website, and I'll post it on my social media page tonight as well, so people know, you know, what's out there, what they might be interested in, and hopefully people will fill out the form and get involved.
Yeah, and I would also mention, because I received a similar question today, that if, as people go to the Town website, if you look up on the Town Boards and Committees, they're listed in alphabetical order, and when you click on the name of a committee, it actually, there's a standard format that provides a description of the committee, and then if you scroll down to the bottom of the page, you will see the, you know, you will see the members of the committee and when their terms are expiring. So, you know, to the extent that there are terms expiring in 2020, or if, if something says vacant, it does, it does indicate an open position. I would say that in general, we typically have a vacancy on just about every committee during the year. And, and, and we noted and discussed some tonight as well. So anyway, thank you for bringing that up, Bill. That being said, I think this concludes the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, July 14. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.